Calling meeting in order.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, June 2nd, 7th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Troop is absent.
All right. Stand for...
Stand for a moment of silence.
Let's have a moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all grateful and thankful that you allowed us to gather and assemble in these chambers today, Lord. We ask that, you know, by the power of your Spirit, that you help us make good decisions on the behalf of the city of Erie and its residents. We ask that you seek and comfort those who are in mourning right now due to the violence in our city, oh Lord. We ask that you just send us help. And then we also ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to your Father, and to the United States of America, to the people of our own country, to all nations, one nation, under God, in the scope of the truth, and to the peace.
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the May 17th, 2023 City Council meeting and bills for payment on June 9th and 16th, 2023. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
We don't have any presentations today? Do we have any repository sales?
Come up to the podium, please. If you could state your name and the property that you're here to represent.
My name is Dylan Roseby. My business is Helpful Home Solutions, and the property is 739 East 8th Street, 16503. Sorry, I was just going... It's just an empty lot. It's actually directly adjacent to 745 East 8th. I live at 728, so I've been speaking to my neighbor for a little over the past year, and I intend to buy 745 off him probably next summer when he intends to move, actually with his wife. I have purchased 701 and 703 East 8th, which are up on the corner. And when I purchased 728 East 8th, I also acquired a half lot next door, which I had attached to my home. That's pretty much my plan with this. I would just attach 739 to 745 when I purchased the home for him, just to make the yard bigger. Maintenance would be pretty simple because I live on the block, and there is, you know, no property to maintain. It's just an empty lot. I think that about covers it on my end.
What do you intend to do with the property?
Again, literally just attach it to 745 when I acquire the home. So again, just make the yard bigger for 745. I can just attach the lot to the property, so all the taxes are bundled into one, which again is what I did with 728 Street, which is where I live now.
I'm a little unclear. So are you purchasing 728 from a landlord? Is that...
No, no. I live at 728. Sorry. I was just saying that I intend to do just the same principle of what I did when I bought this house, just purchase the side lot, bundle them together. It just creates, you know, a bigger yard attached to the house.
Did you recently buy 728? Is that...
No, maybe about three years ago.
Okay. We have a note here that's owned by somebody else.
Vivian Caruba?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my mother and my business partner. Sorry. Yeah, different last names.
That makes way more sense.
You were talking about 745, purchasing that home? Is that something you're already in the process of?
No, I've just been in communication with the homeowner for, like I said, probably a couple of years now. I'm pretty sure he has every intention to sell it to me. I mean, we talk on a pretty frequent basis, so...
And it would remain, both properties would remain residential?
Correct, yes.
All right. I don't have any further questions. Anyone else have any questions? All right. No? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Sorry. Last time I had to go in here and sign something, is that the case this time?
Um, you did that with your license.
Okay.
So we're good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any other repository sales? Any other repository sales? Any other repository sales? Moving on to citizens to be heard.
Hi, my name's Dave French. I, uh, I'm temporarily staying at my sister's place, 118 West 39th. I had lived in Las Vegas the last five years. Came back right around Easter, and I'm glad to be back. I'm mysterious a lot. I was educated here. I have some friends around here. It's good to see a lot of these people, because there's a couple of things that concern me. We'll go with the short one first, and that's pedestrian safety. Pedestrians are being killed at a 40-year-high all over the country. And I do notice that sometimes when I'm in a crosswalk, there's some spots that there's like a water pipe, and the cap's missing, and I, my cane goes like that deep in the one over by 11th and Sass. Right now, it's easy to see, but when winter's light ices up, someone could get hurt there. This is in not several of the crosswalks. I'm concerned about some of the speeding going on. I don't know what the speed limits are in Erie, but I don't think anybody much pays attention to it. It's, at times, very difficult to cross the street, and sometimes I get a little bit short-fused on it. I haven't hit anybody with my cane yet, but I'll try not to. But the thing that really concerned me the most, I spent a lot of time in downtown Erie, and there's a critical need for women shelters. There are more and more women on the street, and it's sad. I mean, I've seen it out of Vegas where elderly, disabled people have nowhere to go. We do a pretty good job with the City Mission and other places for men, but there's some women that are forced to maybe go to places they shouldn't be going to, and I don't know what the answer is to that. And I don't think any of us will want to see anybody that we have as loved ones be out there, but there's women out there with children, with elderly women out there. We need to find a way to help these people out, and I hope I can be part of the solution, but I'm glad to be back.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I live in the city of Erie, and I decline to give my address. I don't think it's needed. It's not appropriate to put people with that kind of exposure. I want to remind anybody again, if you're on Medicaid, Medicaid is no longer being renewed automatically. You need to go to the Pennsylvania Compass website and make sure that the state has the most current contact information for you so that you can receive renewal information. Otherwise, you'll be kicked off of Medicaid. I am Democratic Committee person for the 17th, the 6th Ward, 17th District. There are approximately 38 elected committee, Democratic Committee people in the city of Erie. I was elected in the 2022 primary by 185 people. To my way of thinking, it would be a more democratic process were there to be a person removing their name, withdrawing their name from the two-year seat on City Council prior to August, the August deadline, then the Democratic Party would have the ability to select a candidate, which is, as I understand the process. That would put 30-plus people who were duly elected by as many as 40 to 200 people in their districts to be committee people to choose the candidate rather than have it be chosen among six people next year. I'm just putting that out there for your consideration, whoever would be involved in such a consideration. Now, if you see me getting angry, it's not that I'm angry at you, it's just my degree of emphasis and frustration. I have been watching the posts by the city of not really very high grass telling people that now it's going to cost $100 if people have a quality-of-life violation for tall grass or other things, and yet the city has, does little or nothing to correct the non-residential property owners who fail to maintain their sidewalks or block their sidewalks illegally during construction, as is currently the case with the Cathedral on 10th Street at Sass. They have mid-block closures using flagging only, no barriers, no detectable barriers. Anybody who travels with a mobility cane would not detect them. Anybody who travels with a mobility cane would be halfway down the block before they encountered the closure, not knowing what they were doing, getting disoriented. It's actually interesting. I walked yesterday between the two flags in the street. There's actually a potential to provide a sidewalk bypass, but there isn't a safe one currently existing. EDDC did it on State Street. Surely, surely it could be there, but I think it's been way over two years between the school and the church that the Catholic Church has controlled our access to that sidewalk. Erie Insurance has done that. Hagan has done that with his projects on 6th Street. It's time for the city to pass an ordinance requiring the payment for sidewalk closure, requiring actual demonstration of need of these sidewalk closures. And I think that the city should be citing property owners. Waste Management between 16th Street and the railroad tracks on Raspberry does not maintain their sidewalk on the west side of the street. Students walk to school on that street. This is not a poor company. They should be maintaining their sidewalk. If the city is raising quality-of-life funds, they should also cite the businesses. I'll remind you again that the city should have a traffic mitigation ordinance. The mayor wants to have all these new residents come to town. There should be ordinances if there's going to be construction. There should be an ordinance in place if the IRG actually ever happens. I live near Baldwin Park, as you may know, and all of a sudden, we have these bright blue walls on the pickleball courts. Nobody asked us if we wanted to have to view these bright blue walls as we enter the park, as we approach the park, as we walk towards the park. They are saying that they're eventually going to consult with us, but we don't want these bright blue walls. I like the nice dull gray of the concrete. This is our park. This is our viewscape, and we're waiting. I guess I want to just remind you again... Is that my fellow? No. Remind you again that in order to reduce the use of single-use plastics, the city, the Water Authority, the Downtown Association could acquire hydration stations and have them available either to rent or to provide, like the stage which we have, so that people can fill their bottles rather than having a lot of single-use water bottles. Thank you.
Is that it today?
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Public comments? We could go to ordinances for final passage.
Mr. President, I know I'm a little out of order here, but I'd like to almost speak like a citizen. I don't know if anybody noticed, but Tops is closing their 26th Street Market. You know how many folks walk from 19th Street all the way up to Tops and then walk home, carrying the food that they buy with three weeks' notice? These folks are having their life totally changed. They're going to have to go to Yorktown or 38th Street. I don't know if we can do anything about it, but I sure would like the administration to take a look at it, you know, if it's a lease situation that needs to be remedied. Maybe Art Money can help that. It helps everything else. I just, I'm concerned about the folks because I've watched them when the folks that took over the old Roosevelt Building, they had to block off the sidewalk for a little while because they were putting a brand-new sidewalk in. But during that time, those folks were carrying their food up and down on the street. Again, the folks at the Roosevelt site fixed it up. They have, they have a path to go to, but they're not going to have a Tops to walk into, and I think it's terrible. I'm sorry to be out of order, but I had to bring that up.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council file number 16351, official ordinance 262023, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for the purchase of police, fire, and winter maintenance equipment. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance bill number 16351, and now known as official file ordinance 262023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council passed official file ordinance 262023 by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16352, official ordinance 272023, an ordinance amending Article 117 to update the administrative branch of city government to make the chief of the Bureau of Police and the chief of the Bureau of Fire directors in the absence of a public safety director. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance bill number 16352, and now known as official file ordinance 272023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski...
I'd like one second here to explain some context. This is a matter of third-class city code. It's Chapter 111, where it says that departments are established by ordinance and that the city may enact ordinance establishing departments to implement administrative functions of the city. Later in that chapter, it says that these powers and duties of the departments that council may determine by ordinance the following, and gives a list of examples of how that is done. Because we exist in a third-class city with an optional charter for a strong mayor, "It is the mayor that shall enforce the charter and ordinances of the city and all the general laws applicable thereto," instead of like a city manager that the council would hire, the electorate gets to hi, uh, vote for a mayor to do that. So that includes some public safety responsibilities that would be in a mayor even outside of the council manager governance. And then there's some aspects in the strong mayor council relationship where in that optional charter, each department is headed by a director appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of council. If that person was to be fired, or the mayor may at his discretion, their discretion, remove a department head with notice with, but they have to give their intention first to council before it's effective. These departments are in our administrative code. That's Section 117 and 113, and I want to give some history as to how some of this stuff usually works out. In 1984, we had a computer vendor. Their suggestion was that we then get our own computer department. So in 1984, with ordinance 24, we established a computer services department in the mayor's office. That's ordinance 1310. It was successful, so four years later, five years later, in 1989, it was transferred into the Business Administration and Finance Department with ordinance 109. We should probably update that. We call it IT now. We need to probably update that. We should probably vacate 1310 since that wasn't done by ordinance 109 from 1989. In 2020, we updated a number of these, also still before my time. That was adding the Planning Department and Community Economic Development Department. As long as I've been on council, we've been without a planning director more often than we've been with, so there's always some question as to how this is working out. But what we see in that process is that in 2020, it was updated legislatively. It was updated administratively. It still hasn't been updated for accounting and budget purposes. All the other departments are their own line in the budget, their own number system. This one's still in the mayor's office. That's a little bit off of how it otherwise is in practice. But by ordinance, council establishes this organizational structure, departments, bureaus, offices, and titles like director. This ordinance is, without a director of public safety, by ordinance, the mayor would act as that director. This ordinance changes that so that in lieu of a director of public safety, instead of the mayor acting as such, the chiefs would move up. Council probably should have been asked to do this five and a half years ago. It's an easy update. There's no real conflict over that, but we probably need a number more updates. We probably need computer services, really called IT now. Personnel is really called human resources now. 13.05 is the one that points out that the mayor can have clerical or office personnel as the budget, as council budgets in his office, so we have a number of staff that fits that description. And some of that is with communications, for example. The mayor's office has the communications. Allentown, they put their communications manager in the mayor's office. Redding puts theirs in the managing director's office. Scranton's mayor has been asking for one. But the city should not be administered outside these terms of ordinances. Council will happily consider changes to the ordinances, as I expect that we will approve today, though a little bit out of order. And on behalf of council, I'm asking, I'm offering, on behalf of council, I'm offering to do our jobs legislating as suggestions are made, and I'm asking the executive branch to administer in the enforcement of the charters and ordinances as the optional charter requires. We have no real way to do that and to enforce that outside of budget, though, so just giving some context as to what this ordinance is and how much I look forward to updating future ones. Any other comments or discussion?
Could you repeat that?
I'll send you the transcript with the citations.
Thank you.
All right. Call for the vote.
Council file bill ordinance number 163152, and now known as official file ordinance 272023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council passed official file ordinance 272023 by yea six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16353, appropriating the sum of $142,234 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from LSA, the Dive Team Vehicle Project. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski. Council file ordinance 16353, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16353 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16354. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $177,484 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the 2023 Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski. The council file ordinance number 16354, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16354 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16355, appropriating the sum of $147,300 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the 2023 Auto Theft Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski. Council file ordinance number 16355, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, oop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16355 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16356, appropriating the sum of $273,428 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the following emergency solution grant, ESG 23 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Ms. Faulkner. The council file ordinance 16356, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16356 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16357, appropriating the sum of $3,402,370 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and $5,000 program income, for a total of $3,45,237 for the following community development grant, Grant Projects, CD 23. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Ms. Faulkner. The council file ordinance number 16357, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council adopt council file ordinance 16357 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16358, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $933,497 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the following home M23 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Ms. Faulkner. The council file ordinance 16358, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16358 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16359, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,800,000 from appropriate, unappropriated, and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the Public Safety Complex Fund, and will be used to purchase the Miller Brothers property located at 2111 State Street, Erie, PA. Funds are from the American Rescue Plan Revenue Replacement.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, I hate to make a big thing of this because I'm going to vote for it. It's a very good public safety project, but I don't know what we're thinking. I've asked at least a half a dozen times. Let me see the appraisal. Why are we paying 2.8 million? Why are we paying 2.8 million? Who said that? Uh, I say that only for future projects. Don't bring us anything without an appraisal in your hand before. If we don't know what we're talking about value-wise, the city is very lucky to have somebody like Mr. Miller with a handshake sitting there and staying with the same amount of money. Because without a written contract with contingencies in it, he could hold his hostage now. We already have almost 100 grand into checking out the building and make sure it works that way. Uh, I am 100% behind the building. I just don't like the way they were doing it. And I will watch even more closely from now on. Appraisal first. Thank you very much. And I'm a yes.
Call for the vote.
Can I continue discussion on that?
Yeah, sure.
My concern with, I, I got to tour the public safety facility this week. It's, it's fantastic. We absolutely need it. Um, as public safety liaison, I've toured Marsh Street. I've walked all through City Hall. We are bursting at the seams between the fire department and the police department. Uh, we absolutely need this. My concern, however, is redirecting funds from community development to public safety. When we initially, um, I wasn't on council at the time, but as a grant writer and a grant administrator, I follow very closely the different buckets of funding that are available for different projects. And so to take funds from Technical Assistance for Small Business, which yes, those grants were distributed, there is leftover. However, I fundamentally believe that community cert, community development, economic and community development funds should stay in the bucket of economic and community development. This is public safety funding. There is $14 million in the public safety bucket. Um, I understand that some of that has been allocated. There's plans for it to also be allocated. Um, but, uh, if we need to move forward and make adjustments to that to accommodate for this excellent facility that we absolutely need, I think police department needs to be amenable to that instead of dipping into another pot of funds for something that isn't for community and economic development. It's, it's for public safety.
Any other discussion?
Um, yeah, I'll just second, um, everything that Susanna has mentioned. I had a, um, shock when I realized where we were pulling funds from in order to fund this, when I know that a large sum of money went towards, um, you know, public safety and the need for ARP funds to help with those needs and a lot of the deferred maintenance that we've had. But when you're going to pull funds specifically, um, from a council that didn't have much discussion before these, um, monies were put into buckets, I think that you're going to get a little bit of a pushback and we're gonna want a lot more information than just being told to vote on things. So I second what Susanna has mentioned about, you know, the economic development funds definitely shouldn't have been something that we were even thinking about pulling from. But ultimately, um, that was a conversation that was had before council was even on council, um, a lot of the members currently. So we can't really change things, but we can agree or disagree to put money where they have been earmarked for.
I'm not sure who could possibly answer this, but is there a potential if this vote is tabled, would we be able to see an actual appraisal before our next meeting?
If you look at new business under number one, um, there would be a, there's a thousand, 100,000 that's going to be, uh, in, as we enter the contract, and then the appraisal would be coming afterwards. So are you comfortable with that without tabling? Are you comfortable voting knowing that there will be appraisal before any further money is expended beyond that? Yeah, there's contingencies.
Mr. President, let it be known, you're not talking about a guy walking into a house and in 72 hours giving a institution an appraisal. You're talking about a general appraiser who is probably gonna take, in this market, probably a month to get an appraisal on us now. That's why I was talking about it six months ago. If we wanted to do this, that should have been the first step. Uh, hopefully it won't hold up the project. I think it's worth it, but I'm not a general appraiser. Uh, and we're talking about people's money here, not ours. Well, ours too, because we live here. But it's, it's important that we do it the right way. And that's what we were talking about in the first place. But I think appraisal right now would just probably muddy the waters. We need it, and I don't know how they're gonna release the money.
All right, I just want to point out one last thing with the, the last two words in this is revenue replacement. That was something that, as all of the money was allocated to buckets, uh, in December of 2021, uh, the final rule didn't come out till March of 2022. And revenue replacement changed dramatically in the course of how we allocated the money and how the final rule put it together. We'd originally only allocated for $5 million of revenue replacement. And as the math's looking now, we could have up to maybe even 50 million of the 76 million we have in ARP money now revolving through revenue replacement. So this is quite a dynamic shift that I'm very happy that the city is adaptable enough to adjust to. Is there any other comments or discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the council file to, for the entire 2.8 million dollars to come from the public safety.
We can do that in the transfer later.
Okay.
Any other comments or discussion? Call, call for the vote.
Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance number 16359 haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16359 by yea six, nay zero on first Mr. President, this takes us to new business.
Mr. President, move the balance. We need a second.
I count on you two for it every time. The veterans.
Looking to separate number one and two from new business.
Are you sure you want number one and not transfers on the third page?
Sure.
Okay, so leave number one in the balance?
Leave number one in the balance.
Okay. So that's the transfers of Department of Finance and American Rescue Act funds.
Did we talk about number three? We left it open-ended in caucus.
Number two, number two you're seeing.
No, we'll say number three, Eagles Nest.
It's number two. It's weird with the way it's set up with the paragraph splits.
No, whatever you say.
Any other separations? Call for the vote.
Okay, just want to clarify this. Um, we have number two and the nu, the first transfer. Is that it?
Um, the last transfer on my sheet, the 2.8 million dollar transfer.
The first tran, okay, so you, okay, so do we not want the first one, first transfer?
Correct. The only thing we want is the 2.8 million dollar transfer from five different funds into revenue replacement.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Okay, we have a resolution resolved by the city council of the city of Erie that the Enterprise Zone Loan Review Committee approval of the following loan be formally ratified. Eagles Nest Corporation, Leadership Corporation, $607,760 for a three-year term. These funds have been made available through the City of Erie Urban Core Economic Recovery Revolving Loan Fund and Loan Repayments. The forgivable loan will be charged against account number 3670000000001007. The interest rate is fixed at 0% per annum. The city solicitor's office will assist with the preparation of the loan documents for these transactions. And city council further directs the proper city officials are authorized to sign the necessary documents and agreements effectuating the same. Discussion?
Mr. President, I separated that just to make everybody aware of the fact that Bishop Brock and his folks over there at Eagles Nest, uh, thought they were getting the money a year ago, and because of red tape or whatever, uh, it hasn't happened yet. Uh, I urge the administration, Mr. Groener's on vacation, I understand it, but whatever, uh, I hope we're not talking about this next meeting, because I hope the check is in the Eagles Nest hands so that we can move forward with a very worthy project. That's the only reason I separated it.
Any other discussion?
I think it's important to note that any of the nonprofits in Erie that received the community development ARP funds were held to the same standards. I know this as a grant administrator for a nonprofit. Um, the grant agreement says very clearly it is a reimbursable grant. That means it is the duty of the nonprofit to follow the grant agreement, spend the funds, submit a form for reimbursement, and receive a check from the city. Eagles Nest has already done that for about $70,000 of the project. And this is a great project, no doubt. Anything that helps kids, physical activity, after-school programming, training, I absolutely support. My concern is the fact that there, there is not the same standards necessarily held for all nonprofits. And so I would like to see a more formal process for this. We've talked about how there wasn't necessarily the best processes when the ARP fund grants were made available. Um, but I do know from also signing one of these contracts, it is very explicitly a reimbursement grant program. There is no $675,000 check that can go directly to Eagles Nest from ARP funds. I think there are other solutions available. I just want to ensure that all of our organizations are held to the same standards in Erie and have to go through the same processes to access such large sums of funding, um, whether they come from taxpayer dollars or federal government stimulus money.
Um, I'd like to comment. So, uh, there's a couple of things that do need to be clarified, that, um, ARP funds are not necessarily reversible, uh, reimbursable grants. That's, that's the way we decided to administrate them. Um, two, uh, my father was in construction. And so I can tell you, nobody's putting a shovel in the ground until they have some money. And so if you're doing a large capital project, there's, unless you have a half a million dollars in a bank and another pot, nobody's going in and saying, hey, we're gonna start this project and we're gonna wait for 30, 60 days to get paid. That's not the way construction works. That I do know. Uh, whether people like or want the project or not, that's beside the point. The point is that the council decided to give them the money. And, um, and now we're at a different place where it's, and I wanted to note that, so the money orig, this 675 was originally in the, uh, out of, in the economic development, $20 million that we gave that department. So this money is actually coming out of the same department that we put it into last year. It's just being, uh, conveyed a little differently. Uh, so I just wanted to make note of that because, uh, it's been a frustration since I've been sitting here that we make rules that make it difficult for people to use the money that, uh, that we would like them to have, and sometimes unnecessarily, and, um, and, you know, unintended consequences sometimes. You know, uh, all people are doing different types of projects with this money. And so it's, my interest is that all the money gets to the people, uh, in some form.
When I first put this on the agenda, there was no process. Even the folks who review the projects weren't organized. And I put it on the agenda. I was asked to pull it. I checked with Bishop. He said, what do you think, Mel? I said, well, pull it. So we pulled it. Couple of meetings later, I put it back on the agenda. There was no process, and I don't think that group had a meeting at that point. It passed council. But it still passed council. in my 20 years on council, when council passed something, it's a law. There wasn't a process in place, and the group wasn't necessarily in place. And as Councilman Keys reiterated so eloquently, that group put the process together and not the federal government. When we pass something, we are making a promise to enforce. And we fell short. Now there's an opportunity to get the project going through Chris's And now we want to put another stumbling block in front. I've been in Erie 50 years. On council 20. I have never seen something like this happen. It has nothing to do with Bishop Brock. It's the project, it's the people in that area. He has done, and his team has done, everything that has been asked of him. And now we're in a big discussion. The money is there. He has been promised on two occasions that the check is on its way. A year has passed and there's no check. Where do we go from here? There's a project out there and the kids are waiting for it. We have the school district on board. We have businesses on board. We have the community on board. And when I say community, I'm not talking only about the black community. I'm talking about the community of Erie, Pennsylvania, the diversity, the Rainbow Coalition. The project just happened to be in that area. Mr. President? Thank you.
I'd like to point out on this particular item of new business, this is not a vote to take away promised money from the Eagles Nest. This is a vote to give new money to the Eagles Nest to replace money that we would be taking away later in the meeting. Um, as Mel offered, I actually didn't know that this was pulled from a previous agenda. But this passed on the first agenda I was ever on council. There was three of us having our first council meeting that day, and I think the only other notable vote that day was the presidency vote. Uh, it was put on before a process was created. That is, that is absolutely true. And, uh, and I'm concerned that maybe we overpromised and may, and now it looks like we're under-delivering on it because of the lack of a check, because of a lack of a process. The recommendations that we're operating under are the The recommendations that we're operating under are the recommendations of our auditor from the U.S. Treasury. There's a very important reason why this is going. And we first moved this without the process of the application and the accountability of that application. And now we would be making a move to do this without the accountability of the U.S. Treasury and the standards that they've set and recommended for us. That's the part that gives me pause of this. I'm a big fan of accountability through all this process, knowing that I'm accountable to the voters. So I have some concerns of it, but now it's a forgivable loan. And that's the ways to make this exception. I'm hoping to keep the money in his pot later in the agenda, but I don't offer any commitments on this one.
And I want to add, I obviously was not on council when all of this was discussed, and the fact that there was not a process in place. But I have never in my 15 years of working in grant writing seen a $675,000 grant being made that is able to bypass the same application process that other nonprofits are held to. And so I would love to see more plans. I would love to have more discussion on it. I don't want to hold it up. Clearly, this has been discussed for a long, long time, but we need to be more cautious when we are discussing grants and large...
And discussing loans.
And when we're discussing loans. But we have to ensure that the nonprofits that are receiving such large sums of money are able to take on that risk. And that's why this is a reimbursable grant. If the check is just given to a nonprofit and that is a huge sum of money for a nonprofit to manage, it's an incredible risk to the city. And so that's why it is done through the reimbursement process. So my concern is that, yet again, we hold different organizations to different standards. I want to see how we can get this passed. But it has been deeply concerning learning about the entire process of it and how we can ensure that we are not in this kind of situation again where we're at a gridlock with something that technically broke ground a year ago and that should be nearing completion at this point.
Can I vote on that? Yes. So while I agree with some of the things that our colleague said, so now what we are voting on is a loan from the Economic Development Company, I guess, the Enterprise Loan Fund and Review Committee. And so they have a review committee. I've sat here for four years. I've never, we've never not ratified a loan to any organization in the four years that I've been here. They have their own approval process. And whether I like the projects or not, they have all passed. And so I think that, you know, that's something that should be noteworthy, that we've relied on this third party for loans upward of $20 million. And now we're second-guessing, you know, their process. So that needs, so I just wanted to make a final note of that. And if you don't have anything on, call for the vote.
I would like to say one thing if I could. You know, any game I've ever played, all I wanted to do is know what the rules were. Don't change the rules on my halfway down. You didn't hit the ball far enough. Or if it bounces twice, whatever. And it's unfortunate. Maybe nobody's fault. But like I had said in caucus, get the check written, let's get these kids a place to be all winter, probably until they're ready to grow up and go to school, to college, which happens quite a bit with Bishop Brock. Again, it's a terrible thing because the rules weren't there. Now they are there, and I understand what Suzanne is saying about the different kinds of rules. We're talking now about a loan. So unfortunately, Mr. Groener is out of town. The minute he gets home, we'll find out where the check is. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes.
No, only because I would like to see it stay without that transfer later in the
Resolution passes five to one. We have a transfer in the Department of Finance, American Rescue Act funds for $2,800,000 to go into revenue replacement. $1,439,340 to the Erie Police Department ARPA programs. $607,760 to the Community Development Initiative in the Department of Community Development and Economic Development. $400,000 in the Department of Economic and Community Development for the Technical Assistance Small Business. $280,400 in the Department of Economic and Community Development Restaurant, Entertainment, Industrial Industry. $72,500 into the Department of Economic and Community Development Flagship Commodore
What I'm looking to do is amend this. The Department of Community Economic Development, Community Development Initiative, we probably need to, as we've taken that money from the Eagles Nest, maybe it's due to move it back to where the Eagles Nest funding is coming from with your Urban Core Economic Recovery Revolving Loan Fund. The Technical Assistance for Small Businesses still going towards some small businesses, the restaurant. This is a matter of seeing that the already funded $14 million of public safety would be funding a public safety building rather than taking it from other economic development patterns through this revenue replacement. So I'm looking to amend this to have the balance of 2.8 million coming from the first account and the remaining accounts to be removed to zero. Do I need to put that amendment up to a vote? Is that how that works?
Can we have discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, discussion.
Right. So like we've talked about, the ARP funds were decided and designated into different buckets. ARP funds are intended to assist those in the community disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. No part of a public safety facility, unfortunately, has to do with assisting those disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Will it absolutely help the city? Do we absolutely need a new public safety facility? No doubt. Do those funds need to come from public safety? Yes. I know with my own personal budget, if I see something new that I want to do, I have to say, oh, well, I can't quite do that and I want to pull from this. And so if the police department needs to amend their spending plans for ARP funds to cover the 2.8 million dollars, then that is what is necessary. But we cannot set a standard of making it acceptable to pull from community and economic development for public safety. That is setting a dangerous standard that we already see, and we've all had discussions around CDBG funds that go unspent, that are meant for low-income communities, that are going to different areas in the city. And so it is a precedent that we are setting that is deeply troubling to me. So I absolutely support this coming from public safety funds. And if those budgets and plans need to be amended to account for this and this wonderful opportunity we have, then that's what's necessary.
And I am in agreeance with Chuck and Susannah. I do not agree with the fact of taking from community and the communities most impacted by COVID and the pandemic to build or fund a building. That need was already there, and this new need that we were blessed with ARP funds for was not on the list, in my opinion. So if you want the building, it's got to come out of funds that you've already earmarked for public safety. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we need to vote to amend it? Is that how this would work?
Would need to be a motion to amend the session.
But I need to understand the amendment again.
But it needs to be a motion.
All right. I'll make the motion. The motion is to amend so that 2.8 million comes from account 0362316000. I said four zeros in a row, I hope. 5086. So that would be 2.8 million. The remaining four counts, ending in the four numbers, 5077, 5081, 5072, and 5080, would be zeroed out for that transfer. The balance would come from just that first line. At 2.8 million, the rest would remain zero.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend to have all of the 2.8 million dollars to go coming out of the Erie Police Department ARPA programs directly into revenue replacement, all of it. Voting on the amendment, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop. Oops, he's absent.
The miserable man.
I have an old form here. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. The amendment passes.
All right. That's the last thing on the agenda I can make the vote on. Start with Mr. Brzezinski today. Been putting Suzanne on the spot too often. Start your end report.
Pretty quiet right now. Civic Center Authority's been running really well, even with some cancellations and other little pickups and things like that. They're a little bit ahead of schedule as far as the revenue they were anticipating. So that's always good news. The Port Authority is in flux right now. They're looking for positions to be filled and things like that. Hasn't happened yet. And the final thing is, I have to ask the administration, Renee, can you have somebody from the administration, art money, whatever? You told us earlier that there was quite a bit of money that we didn't give out because people didn't ask for it. Can we get ahold of those TOPS people and find out if Economic Development could put something together to keep that TOPS place open? Or do you want me to go there? I'm only a councilperson, but I am one. I can be there. But I would much, I think the hammer would be much bigger if somebody from the administration or Groener's office or whatever, if we ever needed economic development. We can't afford to keep on losing things like this. It's totally hurting the people that love our city, and that bothers me greatly. So if you could do something about that, Renee, I'd love it. Thank you.
As far as my committee report, I just have the EMTA Community Event, which is going to be Wednesday, June 14th at 5:00 p.m. at their EMTA Authority at 127 East 14th Street. It is a community event. They ask that you bring a chair. They're going to have a concert. They're going to have food vendors. They're going to have, I think, beverages as well. They are asking people not to bring a cooler, just bring your chair. They want you to support the local events. So that's something going on. This is the second year. As someone who lives on the Lower East Side, I grew up in a food desert on Fifth and Wallace, between Parade and Wallace. So I deeply feel for the community who walks to and from the grocery store on TOPS. That is going to definitely impact a great community drastically because food is a necessity. So we need to do what we can to address the food insecurities in our community. We are home to the poorest zip code in the country. We have 44% of child poverty. We have a lot of young people that don't have anything to do, and there's nothing catered to them, and then they get in trouble. There's a lot of shootings that are occurring in our city, and people are dying, people are ending up in jail for their whole lives, along with ODs constantly affecting communities throughout our whole city and the county as a whole. We need to do more to address our young people's needs. We need to prioritize them. They've never been a priority, which is why my whole life, we have been seeing the situation get worse. I have two brothers who are incarcerated, and my mother makes the statement that some graduated and some chose otherwise. So with young people, if you give them the choice, they will do well. They will do far beyond the expectation that you give them. You just have to give them the opportunity. Not all kids are bad kids. But when every time they turn around, they're getting negative feedback from all the adults around them, it's hard for them to thrive, to be something that they don't see every day in their own community. So as somebody who didn't have a lot of adults that I wanted to be like growing up, I'm very proud that I give the young people in my community something to hope for one day. But ultimately, the people who are making decisions need to do more, and we need to give our young people stuff to do. We have a lot of crime going on at Doppin's Landing, at our water access points. There's not a lot of lighting, there's not a lot of security, and public safety is a need. But we need to make sure that we're doing that in a proactive way, not a reactive way. So let's do more for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Keys?
Since we last met, I went to the Airport Authority meeting. There's nothing really new to report there. It's still everyone's hope that we get another airline, you know, back in Erie. Other than that, you know, I just want to echo what Jasmine was saying, that we do have to support the youth and the next generation, and we do have to be proactive in making sure that they get the resources necessary for them to thrive. You know, it's notable they have a food desert, but you know, there's a desert or deficiency in a lot of other things, including safe places for recreation. And so those will be some of the things that I'll be prioritizing with the rest of my time on council.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to piggyback on Councilwoman Jasmine and Councilman Keys. I've been working in this community with kids over 36 years directly, as an employee of the city, when they had a city recreation, as deputy director of recreation for Booker T. Washington Center, as a board member in JFK Community Center, and for 33 years running Spoon's Summer Basketball League. I'm aware of the violence that happened in our city. And it bothers me that I can't stop it. I ask myself over and over, what am I not doing? I don't know. I worry about gun violence because I have about 200 people five days a week at the court. And when somebody is shooting at someone, they don't care who they hit, a baby, pregnant So I took it upon myself last week to meet with some young men from the Lower East Side, the Lower West Side, Central, all the hoods, representative. They assured me in their words, "Spoon, nobody's coming up at your court. We respect you." That tells me that we are doing... that we are doing something good. And when I say "we," I'm not just talking about my small group of volunteers. I'm talking about city, administration, council. Without your help, it would be more difficult. Because if I didn't get the money to do it, we'll go back to shirts and skins. That's how we started. We didn't have any. The gun violence bothers me because I lost a brother to gun violence. Unfortunately, he was tied up into drugs. And he did not turn in the right amount of money. He was messing with not the cartel, but a group in New York City. And he was killed. Shot with a sawed-off shotgun, close range, in the head. There was no head. So dealing with the gun violence doesn't fear me at all. I'm concerned. And some folks say, "Well, where's the police?" Well, they don't know it's going to happen. They react. And hopefully, when they transfer the, transfer into the Miller Building, they'll be closer to the action, to get there a little quicker. Public safety is number one. Don't wait until it happens to you. Plan ahead, and you don't know what's gonna happen. You could be in your house watching TV, stray bullet. So let's plan ahead. Public safety is number one on my list, and it should be number one in your hearts of all the people in this city of Erie. And I want to thank the young men that I've met with. I guess you can call it the protection of Spoon's Courts. Thank you.
Ms. Faulkner?
Thank you for that, Mr. Witherspoon. I'm gonna start with my public safety report because, uh, in the last three weeks since our last council meeting, there were seven shootings in Erie. And that is the reality of, of what we're, where we're living. Um, like Mr. Witherspoon said, the police can't be everywhere at all times. It's a reaction. And so I'm, I'm proud to see that there's going to be more and more places and spaces and activities for our youth. We need prevention now more than ever. I'm looking forward to the conversations we can have about these, uh, DCD, the Community and Economic Development Funds, that we did not redistribute today, and how we could possibly use those for gun violence prevention. Um, it is something that we need now more than ever. Children are being shot in their homes from outside of the house. It is beyond a tragedy and, and like, I, I follow the lead of what often the leaders of the blue coat say, it is the responsibility of every adult in this city for every single child. So I commend everyone who is working towards prevention and working with our youth and engaging them, having positive relationships with them. There's no bad kids, like Jasmine said, it's just bad decisions. I also want to remind folks, um, to please, please practice safe storage of your guns. I meet monthly with police leadership and I'm hearing time and time again about how the guns that are involved in many of these shootings are, are from kids not even breaking into cars, just opening unlocked cars and stealing a gun. So it is our responsibility to ensure that safe storage of guns is happening. Please, please talk to your friends and family. This is one of those things where we have to be talking to our communities, that we are practicing safe storage of guns, because it is not necessarily that these, you know, these young adults and kids are accessing guns through, you know, some theft or something. Sure, that's happening. But so often, they are literally opening an unlocked car door and taking a gun out of a glove department, and then there's a shooting in the city. So please practice safe storage. Um, aside from that, also with gun violence, um, Jasmine mentioned, and there's been a lot of information in the news about the recent violence at the dock and various peers. This is something that really picked up at the start of the pandemic. Obviously, we were gathering outside instead of gathering inside. Um, I really urge, uh, Police Department, but also Public Works, to take swift action on putting some more lighting down at the dock. Lighting is a great preventative measure for shootings. Um, there's study after study about the importance of lighting in high violence areas. Um, so very much want to see some action there. Uh, lastly, with my police report, there were 1,362 calls for service last week. So definitely an uptick with the nicer weather. We usually expect that, but quite an uptick. Um, oh, and lastly, with the police, um, there were five homicides in May, um, and all of those have been solved. So I commend the Police Department for, for their quick action on that. Also with public safety, um, I'm very grateful for our fire department leadership, um, for taking me on a tour of multiple of their facilities two weeks ago. I got to see the Marsh Street facility, uh, which is truly crumbling. Um, so I can't stress enough how important this new public safety facility is. Uh, I also got to see two firehouses, and I, I keep hearing deferred maintenance, but I've gotta say, our, our firemen and women are, are truly heroes. And seeing them in action, um, I, it was exciting. It was really exciting, and I'm so grateful for them. I hope we can move forward with some improvements to their facilities because there's leaking roofs and old windows, and there's not the proper storage for their very equipment. It's like $4,000 for their equipment, just for one fire, fireman or woman. And they need lockers because it needs to be prevented from UV light because then it damages the equipment. So I hope we can put some things forward in the next few months, um, to better protect our, our, our fire department. There were 363 calls for service in the last three weeks. Um, and then beyond that, I do want to mention, just as someone who used to live in California, if you've noticed the haze outside and the glowing pink sun, that is because we are under a cloud of wildfire smoke. There are the worst wildfires that have ever happened in Quebec, Canada, right now. I'm someone with asthma. I know a lot of our kids have asthma. Our current air quality in Erie is at a 141. Healthy is below 50. So if your eyes are itchy, your, you know, kiddos are coughing, please limit your time outside. Hopefully, we all still have our masks, wear a mask outside. Um, but this is something that I was well equipped with, living in Colorado and California. I did not think I would ever experience this here in Erie, being under a cloud of wildfire smoke. Um, there are wildfires now in New Jersey because of this. Um, so please act with caution, um, and remind the folks in your life, especially any kiddos with asthma, that the air quality is, is seriously an issue right now, um, in our community. All right, um, Water Authority, I attended their board meeting back in May. Everything's going great. I'm gonna be doing a tour there in July of multiple of their facilities. Um, and if folks haven't seen it yet, uh, the Sassafras, Sassafras Street, um, extension is now open. Please remember to share the road. It is a space for pedestrians, cyclists, and cars alike. Um, it's beautiful. It connects a whole walking path, um, in the West Bayfront, so very excited to see that open. I also, uh, met with the Sewer Authority, attended their board meeting in May, um, and did a tour of the facility. Thank you to Paula and Nick for the tour. It's really interesting, you know, sewer is not something that is the, uh, sexiest board assignment, um, but it is something that is such a critical public service. And I really commend everyone who works at the Sewer Authority because they run a tight ship over there. And the amount of waste that is being put down our drains, flushed down our toilets that should not be there, is really costing a drain on our taxpayers. So please stop flushing plastic, don't litter. It literally caught, yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, you should see it. Jasmine go do a tour. It's wild. Um, but entire bays of our water that needs to be filtered with plastic and litter in it. Like, we have to do better. That's coming from residential. That's not just people throwing litter in our drains. So let's do better around that one. Um, last two things, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that June is Pride Month. Um, we have our Pride Parade here in Erie on Saturday, June 24th. The kickoff is at 11th and State Street at 11:00 AM. I know, I will proudly be walking there. And in a time of increased violence and hatred against the LGBTQ community, um, let's try to move a little beyond rainbows and love and lo, love is love, and to our communities are under attack in other states, and how are we uplifting folks in our own community? Lastly, my own plug for the youth that I work with. I teach at Erie Dance Theater. I teach ballet twice a week. Uh, it's a program of the MLK Center. I grew up in that program. Uh, I was there from the time I was four to 18. Um, it's a big reason for, it, it really shaped the person I've become. Um, we have our recital this weekend, so if you wanna walk, walk the walk and talk the talk of supporting our youth, I ask you to please come to Strong Vincent on Friday and Saturday. It is our annual recital. Over 75 kids are performing in it. 90% of our kids are on tuition assistance. And so these kids have such a tremendous opportunity. And I'm just saying, the theme is Star Wars, and so it will be Out of This World. It's at 7:00 PM. Doors open at 6:00 PM on Friday and Saturday at Strong Vincent Middle School. Um, so please come support those kiddos, cheer them on, or just geek out to all the good Star Wars music. Thank you. That's fine.
The, sorry, you said geek out, just as I, uh, and then I start laughing. All right, uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Faulkner. Uh, my committee report, uh, as a few people have noted, that there was an uptick in violence and homicides in May, particularly at the end of May. Uh, I did a ride-along last Friday, uh, in the midst of that uptick in, uh, gun violence and, um, and the beautiful weather that day. And, uh, I also, I think it was a full moon. I voided, uh, I had a nice busy day with it, um, although, uh, later that night is when all of the gun violence occurred. And, um, so I, I didn't get to see any, witness any of that, but we, I had a great ride-along, uh, enjoyed, enjoyed a lot of my interactions, um, a lot of, a lot of domestic, uh, disputes. Uh, I went to the Historic Review Commission. Uh, just a reminder, anyone that's got a house over 50 years old, that's got some history to it and needs some repairs, um, really take a look at that program. I was really excited to see a couple of the projects that came through there, one of them being my neighbor. It's always nice when my neighborhood's getting some investment. Uh, and then another house where there was a, a recent, uh, transplant that moved back to town, that's probably dumping 100,000 into her first house after having lived in New York for a long time, establishing her career. Uh, a retired police officer's daughter. And, uh, and she just got a grant to do a new roof. So there was, uh, there was quite a list of people that have needs in historic houses, if they're over 50 years old, $15,000. It's a 10 to 1 match. So if you need a new roof, new windows, painting, and you're in an old, old house, and you've got 1,500 to put down for a $16,500 project, in, uh, you know, there's some qualifications on it, but not, it was, it's pretty impressive seeing the people qualifying for it. Um, a lot of the work in the last couple of weeks has been, uh, chasing around Miller Brothers stuff, making sure that we are ready for that today. Um, we also, I wanna keep this out there on the, uh, on the public's radars, that we're gonna be having a study session on June 22nd for CRIZ, City Revitalization Improvement Zone. Um, I spent a fair amount of time the last couple of weeks talking to, uh, folks that have particular stakes in that and, uh, have been around for the history of it. Uh, four years ago, the first time I ever wrote an op-ed for a failed city council race, I, I wrote about copying the Smart Kids, and I pointed out the three things that turned Allentown around in the late 90s. It was, uh, land value tax, a home rule charter, and an investment zone. Um, so I'm really, I'm really enthusiastic that this opportunity might be in front of us. Sorry to the public that was tuned in. I even checked the Facebook comments, and somebody was pointing out how much they loved listening to the music extra long today. Uh, sorry that we were 10 minutes late with a lively caucus. Um, I wanna point something out, that up until today, we have been unanimous on every single vote. So I appreciate how council has come together these last six months to build consensus. Um, today, we broke that streak. That was me. That's, uh, so that was on me. I'm sorry, guys, for not being a good team player. And that was with a, a statement throwaway vote. I, I was punting in field goal range on a 5 to 1 vote, uh, with the lead. So I mean, there was, uh, so, so I broke that streak. I'm sorry about our good teamwork. And, uh, and I, I hope that we continue to have good teamwork from here. Uh, one of the citizens that we heard, uh, offered some comments about the Quality of Life ticketing. And, uh, it is a lot of the, the grass pictures. I wanna point out that in Quality of Life Number 35, it's obstruction of right-of-way. That was one of the ones that was increased. And I, I think that, I think you have a really good position on why that's, you know, how we might be able to enforce that. It's as if we treat, as if there was exceptions already. And I don't think we actually have those exceptions written out. Uh, so otherwise, it should be enforced. And then the other one is, um, Quality of Life 37, broken or hazardous sidewalks, is one of the areas that should be better enforced. And I'll tell you, that's, uh, from my neighborhood, that's one of the ones that drives me way more crazy than grass. We've got a vacant property on my block that has overgrown grass, but I'll tell you, it's those sidewalks that I trip over. Those are the ones that drive me crazy, always walking my dog and tripping. Anyways, that's it for my report today.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'm very happy that you told the people that was a ride-along. Because a few citizens saw you in the back of the police car, and they thought, "You finally got caught."
Hey, turn off your mic when you make those jokes. Hey, um, how good it was. Hey, um, yeah, you know, I had, I had a handful of citizens, because one of the stops was in my neighborhood. And, uh, and they didn't exactly know what I was doing, and they just saw there was a whole bunch of cops surrounding me, and that I was in the middle of them. And, uh, so I was getting some text messages that whole time, uh, but we were, there was just a, a domestic misunderstanding, and somebody, uh, had some retribution, pepper sprayed a woman. But her kids were in the house, and they got like, like peripheral pepper sprays. So we were, we were standing there with six officers. The guy that I did my ride-along with, Buddy Wilson, I, I think he got at least three hugs over the course of the day.
Beautiful.
And I think he distributed probably, I would guess, two dozen stickers. He didn't give me one. I didn't get a badge or a sticker. One of the kids noticed that, and then gave me one of theirs extra stickers. So I had a fun time with that. Uh, I'm, I said I'd do two more. I'd do a first shift one and a third shift one. I gotta build up my coffee tolerance and stuff for the third shift. Anyways, Teresa?
The only thing I have to, uh, notify council, that the state auditors have started to, uh, audit the pension plans, and probably in about a couple of months, they should be done. Other than that, that's it.
Mr. Solicitor? Ms. Renee?
I'll try to go quickly. Um, wanted to let you know that tomorrow, uh, well, no, not tomorrow, Friday, 10:00 AM, we're gonna have a special press conference. It will not be, uh, the regularly scheduled Thursday at 10:00 AM. Um, on Friday, we will be announcing the sp, uh, the sponsorship for the 814 Concert Series and Sounds of Summer, and we'll be, uh, introducing the lineup for each of those six-week programs. Um, we're also, uh, in the process of working on completing our census challenge, um, in doing some research in other communities. Um, not, not many have been successful, to be honest, but we're gonna move forward anyway. Um, those, um, those challenges that have been most successful have focused on the group quarter counts. And we know that we had issues in 2020, um, you know, because a lot of the college students were sent home. A vast majority of college students were sent home. And 2020 was the first year in which they were supposed to be counted on campus, and a lot of students were not. So, um, we're, we're compiling data now, uh, to submit our challenge by the end of the month. Um, we're also checking other group quarters, such as the, the jails, the corrections facilities, um, the shelters, um, because we don't think that those were accurate. And then there were also situations where we know there was outdated, um, address data from 2010 that was being used. Apartment numbers had changed. There was no way to collect the data, um, in other group quarter settings. So we're going for it. We're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do there. As, as Councilman Nelson mentioned, we're also working on the CRIZ, which we look forward to talking to you more about on June 22nd. to talking to you more about on June twenty-second. Uh, Love Your Block is, uh, embarking on their small home improvement, uh, projects. And I want to recognize Janet Ortiz, who is with us here this morning. Uh, Janet comes to us from Johns Hopkins University Bloomberg Center for Public Innovation as, uh, the inaugural, one of the inaugural group of summer scholars that have been assigned to cities to help with, uh, community development initiatives. And so we want to welcome Janet. And that's all I got for this morning. Thank you. I will ask Chris Broner to contact them and see if there's any help that they need.
With that meeting adjourned.
City Council adjourns at ten forty-three AM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.